I have a roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Present.
Councillor Mellon. Councillor Tulowitzki. Councillor Coulteritis. Oh, yes, you're here too. I think that I spoke to you on a peripheral vision, so. Uh, Councillor Tulowitzki is present, Councillor Coulteritis. And Councillor Gardner.
Present. We could ask everyone to rise for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to uh turn the meeting over to uh our Clerk Treasurer Wendy Miss for a special recognition of our former Clerk Treasurer, Town Council Member and employee of the town, Dave Schaefer.
One of my favorite things, a microphone. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight to celebrate Dave Schaefer. If you haven't already, there is cake there, coffee, um, a couple of bottles of water left, so. We really appreciate all of you attending tonight, and we especially want to thank Representative Slager for all of his efforts in securing this award for Mr. Schaefer, as well as Representative Mike Androtti. Um, Mike at the last minute called that he's unable to attend tonight, or he would have been here as well. And uh Councilman Morvan is um out of, out of the area, and so he was unable to attend as well. Both Congressman Androtti, no Congressman. That was a test. Congressman Morvan and Representative Androtti sent their congratulations to you, Dave, and their warm wishes. For those of you who don't know, Dave was born in Gary, Indiana. He graduated from Horace Mann High School. He had graduated from Purdue. And then he also earned his master's degree from the University of, or Indiana University. He had a twenty-five year in the steel industry. And then he started working for the town of Munster. He worked here for two years before he was elected as Munster's seventh Clerk Treasurer. He served five four-year terms before he retired. Before this, uh during this time, Dave also um was always a very active man. Even as a youngster in his college days, he was president of his fraternity. He was the vice president of Purdue Student Union. And he was involved with many other activities. When he was a resident here in the town of Munster, he was a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. He was elected to the town council twice, and he served as the president of the town council twice as well. He served the community. As he served professionally as um the president of the Indiana League of Municipal Clerk Treasurers. The Indiana Association of Cities and Towns, which is now called AIM. He was the chair of the Northwestern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, as well as the first Hoosier to hold the national presidency of the National Association of Regional Councils. That's just what he's done professionally. Civically, Mr. Schaefer is a member of the um Munster Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary Club, Munster Lions, the Historical Society. He's also been involved with the Munster Civic Foundation and the uh Indiana Society of Chicago, Friendly Sons of Aaron, and he's a thirty-third degree Mason. So it really should come as no surprise that the man earned the Sagamore of the Wabash Award. This award is a personal tribute to those who have distinguished service to the state. They demonstrate wisdom, public commitment, and a concern for the free will, the well-being of others. That certainly personifies Dave Schaefer. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Representative Slager, who's going to read the official proclamation and present it to our friend and colleague, Dave Schaefer. Yes, I think this would be a good time to be.
Thank you, Wendy. I see Representative Hal Slater, I'm sorry. My colleague, Michael Androtti couldn't be here. But uh we'll try to get it done either way.
I came up here because I want to make sure they spell my last name right.
Yeah, well. He also wanted a lapel pin. Did you talk to Wendy about that?
I'm working on it now.
At any rate.
I can make a note of it right now.
For, for those of you that don't know, the Sagamore is almost the highest honor given to anyone in the state of Indiana. There is one that's given to one person a year. But the Sagamore is, is a coveted award. There's lots of awards you can earn, but I always look at it like uh uh it's a wonderful life. How did you, how did, what was your impact on everybody? And David, I've known him for many years, certainly has had a great impact as you, as Wendy listed off, all the organizations he's been a part of. Every, every philanthropic and, and Munster-related organization, he's been a part of in one way or another. And so without a doubt, he definitely qualifies for the Sagamore. And it is uh a real uh privilege for me to be able to stand in for the governor uh and present the Sagamore of the Wabash. I even went so far as to grow a little goatee so I kind of looked like the governor.
So just think it's.
All right, here, why don't you hold this? That way I can manage, well, I gotta be able to read it too. Okay, so it says, and this is, this uh Council of Sagamores of the Wabash, Eric J. Holcomb, Governor of the State of Indiana, Know all men by these presents. Whereas the greatness of the Sons of Indiana derives in part from qualities possessed by the noble chieftains of the Indian tribes which once roamed its domain. We wrote this just yesterday. Whereas it has been the immemorial custom of the state of Indiana to attract to its support those who have exhibited such qualities. Whereas there has endeared himself to the citizens of Indiana, one David F. Schaefer, distinguished by his humanity of living, his loyalty and friendship, his wisdom and counsel, and his inspiration and leadership. Now therefore, recognizing his greatness and desiring to avail himself to his counsel, I do hereby appoint him a chieftain upon my staff with the rank and title of Sagamore of the Wabash Witness. My hand and the seal of the Council of Sagamores at Indianapolis, Indiana, this twenty-first day of August in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-three. Eric J. Holcomb.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. You all honor me by your presence here. And I'm very much humbled by this award. One of the nice things about growing old is that I have a treasure chest that is packed with fond memories involving friends like you. And that means an awful lot to me to be recognized in this manner. I'm humbled by it. I'm thankful for it. I'm thankful for those who got me here. I didn't get here by myself. You know, it was my, my parents, ministers, classmates, uh coworkers, you name it. Joanne even played a little bit of a part. Love for the joint. And uh there is another person that I promised not to mention her name up here. But I will tell you that her initials are Tricia Abbott. I wasn't supposed to say that. But uh both have been very helpful in getting me to this position that I am now. There's a meeting that's going to uh ensue right now, so I'm going to give up the microphone as much as I hate to. Thank you again for honoring me.
It was tough to act to follow to start a meeting, but uh we will continue on with the rest of the, the agenda for tonight's regular town council meeting. Next on the agenda is the public comment. Uh, we kindly ask it all in-person public comment. It's limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes per group spokesman. Uh, please ask that you keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. And finally, in the event that questions are posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes. And we'll refer questions to the appropriate department or staff for follow-up and responses. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council during the public comment section of the meeting? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Mr. President, I move, we accept the consent agenda.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any, any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. There is no old business. We'll move into new business section. There's a two thousand twenty-three general obligation bond engagement letter. Here's a memo from Clerk Treasurer Wendy Miss. Is there anything that you'd like to add to the memo?
Uh, no, this is our annual uh engagement letter with Barnes and Thornburg to uh head them, their assistance when we go out for the general obligation bond later this year.
Mr. President, I move to confirm the letter of engagement with Barnes and Thornburg.
I'll second that. There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion with regards to the two thousand twenty-three general obligation bond engagement letter? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Item B is the all-city management service renewal. This is for uh providing crossing yards at predetermined intersections in the town of Munster. There is a memo from Chief Shekel in the board packet. Is there anything else? Uh, this is kind of a annual uh re- report. Is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move that we authorize the town manager, Mr. Dustin Anderson, to sign accordingly on behalf of the town of Munster, the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four contract with all city management services. I'll second.
There is a motion, a second, any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I know in previous years, we've talked about the origin of the town covering uh this service on behalf of, well, our residents and our students in the school town. And uh we've talked about the potential of some of these costs going back to the school town. Just curious if those conversations have continued. Or can we see any path forward towards some resolution on them?
We have a quarterly school lease meeting. I can broach it after the next.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion, any other questions from the council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Item C, ordinance nineteen ten, this is the CFNI Business PUD Amendment. CFNI is the uh community foundation of Northwest Indiana, and PUD for those in the audience is the Plan Unit Development. There is a memo from our on-call planner in the board packet. Town Manager Anderson or, or Deputy Town Manager De Tomaso, anything to add to the memo that's in front of us?
No, sir.
There is a recommended, recommended action also that's in that memo?
Mr. President, I move to approve ordinance nineteen ten, amending the CNFI Business Plan Unit Development to accommodate in addition to the existing Diagnostic Center building in Block Two at one double zero one zero, one two one double zero two zero, Donald Powers Drive in Munster, Indiana.
I'll second that. There's a motion, a second, any discussion with regards to this ordinance nineteen ten?
This, this is going through the regular process, have been approved by the Plan Commission. Favorable recommendations.
Exactly, and this, it, this is due to their expansion of the diagnostic center in this location by two thousand square feet. They're adding an MRS suite and a CT scans suite to the building.
Plan Commission supports that.
That's correct. Very good. I see no other discussion. Roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is ordinance nineteen eleven. This is the Centennial Village PUD Amendment. Again, PUD is Plan Unit Development. Uh, anything to add to this uh either D two uh Deputy Town Manager De Tomaso or Town Manager Anderson?
Uh, this relates to Centennial Village uh as the title suggests, and it allows the uh, the, the movement of certain buildings to different locations within the facility. There's also a height of one of the buildings is increased as well.
Yeah, the design standards changed slightly.
Yeah.
Very good. Uh, also, this was um uh talked about twice at the uh, uh, or at the uh Plan Commission the last two months. There is a motion or a recommendation in front of the council?
Mr. President, I move to approve ordinance nineteen eleven, amending the Centennial Village PUD to include revisions to the size, location and shape of Village I and M in the Centennial Village PUD at nineteen, at ninety-six oh one and ninety-six oh five North Centennial Drive, Munster, Indiana, with the three conditions listed.
Thank you. Here's a motion, a second, any further discussion or questions?
I guess just to point out, this is a part of the, again, was discussed, as you mentioned, the Plan Commission. This is part of the ongoing development of the Centennial Village. Um there was talk of uh potential tenants for these buildings, and this will be starting to build up the shoreline of Centennial Village with uh type of uses that might attract people who ride their bikes and um want to look at the lake and bring, bring some more traffic into this part of, and this part of development, so. This is first part of a multi-phase that's coming later this year. And so getting this one done will help the next, maybe even more exciting parts that are still to come.
Very good. Any other questions or comments?
No.
And again, this will, um, part of this development or this process is the, is the connection of the bike path from Centennial Village to the bike, uh, the, the bridge that's over near uh Maynard Lake. Uh, again, that will be later on in the fall, once they start working on the parking lot, parking lot process. Uh, seeing no other discussion from, uh, discussion on this item, roll call, please.
Oh, excuse me, Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to item E, this is the Grand Prairie Wetland Mitigation Continuing Monitoring and Maintenance Agreement. Anything to add to this, uh, Town Manager Anderson?
No, uh, you saw this briefly uh before you graciously tabled it uh two weeks ago. There was a typo in the materials presented by uh Stan Tech. That typo has been re- uh remediated, just like the wetlands uh that were required to be remediated for the construction of the forty-fifth uh Av- Forty-Fifth Street and Kymet Avenue, grade separation and intersection realignment.
Thank you. Here is a recommendation from the council?
I move that we authorize the town manager to sign the agreement with static engineering to ensure wetlands mitigation, monitoring, compliance with the Grand Prairie site for twenty twenty-three.
Second. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the BS and A software upgrade. Clerk Treasurer Miss, you wrote the memo. Is there anything you would like to add to this software upgrade?
Just uh so that the audience is where we upgraded our software in two thousand twenty-one. And we knew at the time that we would like it to be cloud-based. And at the time, BS and A do not offer it on the cloud. They now have a cloud version. We would like to switch to that platform. And we um feel that it will increase our productivity, and there's some features in it that we really like. We were able to see a demo. And we respectfully ask that um council approves the moving forward with the agreement. There's a waiting list that we are twelve or fourteen to sixteen months away from actually getting the software, so the sooner we agree to it the happier it will be as we will get the software in our lifetime. God willing.
Very good. Thank you. Here is a recommendation in front of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agreement with BS and A software for an upgrade to cloud-based software.
Second. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item G. That's for the, coming from the Public Works Department, is purchase of a EZ valve insertion machine, valves and trailer. We have our Supervisor Water and Sewer Division's David White here in the audience. Ready to talk to us. Is there anything you would like to add or reserve, uh, any, in addition to the memo that you'd like to add?
Uh, it's a necessity. It's a tool that we're going to use, you know, in a emergency situation. It's going to help us out, uh, go forward in the future.
I just want to make sure if you come to the council meeting, you have a chance to talk. Uh, very good. Anything else you would like to add? There's a recommendation from the council?
We approve the purchase of the new EZ valve insertion machine and valves from Advanced Valve Technologies for a cost of one hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred ninety-four and dollars and thirty-one cents. And purchase a Dark Horse seven-by-fourteen enclosed trailer from Valpo Trailer for a cost of seven thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. Total purchase price, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand nineteen dollars and thirty-one cents for this package.
I'll second. There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
Just curious why the name of the trailer is so ominous. That's not that serious a question, but I know we, the number of water main bursts we've had has been one of the drivers behind uh adjusting our water rates and enabling us to do a lot of really important work. I'm curious, can you, out of curiosity, can you tell us what this is about installation?
That's, well, uh, situations where we have a, a broken valve and we're not able to isolate a short section of water main for repair. This will help us kind of, you know, bring in the closure and not affect so many residents. So this will allow us to make the, the closure, the shutdown of the service much smaller.
And without this, you have this water pouring into.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it would try to combat having this fix, fix a live water main. This kind of helps control that water. There, yeah, exactly. Actually, yep.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councillor, Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the uh, again, from Public Works, uh, dealing again with the water department. It's a purchase of a comprehensive water valve assessment and exercise program. Mr. White, would you like to add anything to this, or you want to, uh, Mrs. De Tomaso to answer this question?
So we have over a thousand valves in our water distribution system, and we are not a hundred percent aware of their condition and whether they're operating effectively. And so as, when we have the water main break and we have to turn things off, sometimes we don't know whether they're working or not, where they are, this, um, that, they're going to come in, they're going to look at every valve, they're going to exercise it, which is always good to make sure that they keep turning. And um we'll be able to flag ones that need to be repaired. And they can also identify ones that are closed when they should be open. Right? Which we might have some out there that we don't even know about, which will help in the effective operation of this system.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move to approve the comprehensive valve assessment program quoted by Amy Simpson for a three-year period for twenty thousand, twenty-nine thousand dollars in twenty-three, twenty-nine thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-four, and thirty thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-five. Additional GPS data locate slash record fee of ten dollars per valve will be charged by the town for any discovered valves that are not already GPS located in the town water infrastructure map data.
Second. There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
I think it's just good to see all of these projects coming up. It's a very important part of our infrastructure, so.
Very good. Very good. Uh, there is no other discussion or questions. Uh, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda. Is the, so again, from Public Works, it's a quote for crack ceiling, sealed coat and striping of town hall and public works. Did I skip one? Oh, I'm checking off things. Uh, letter I, going back to letter I, this is from both Public Works, it's the purchase of a backflow management service.
I guess I'll take that one again.
Okay.
So part of this backflow management system is going to alleviate some of the pressure out of the fire inspector because we also check down the part. This will be the electronic data piece that will help with controlling, see if there are.
Very good. Thank you. And.
So uh backflow preventers are required on irrigation systems and other uh water services that might not be just used for drinking water in houses, and they need to be tested every year. Um, right now, it's uh, we have paper records that we use, and we are not sure we're capturing a hundred percent of those backflow preventers that are out there. So this system will um computerize all of that, and um it's really a no-brainer because there, I don't think there's much cost to the town to do it because they, they charge a user fee to the owner of the device to log it into the system.
I was like, we'll be a big frog in the twins. There still is the annual fee, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Very good. There's a recommendation from the council?
Mr. President, I move to approve the backflow management service proposed by Backflow Solutions, Inc. in the amount of seven hundred fifty dollars for a one-time ban migration fee and an annual fee of four hundred ninety-five.
Very good. There's a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on now to the uh, uh, letter J, this is the quote for crack sealing, seal coating and striping to town hall and public works. Anything to add to the memo? I see Mr. Small make back there. Should I ask him to give? No, I wouldn't do that to you, Chris. Again, pretty straightforward uh recommendation.
Mr. President, I move to approve the crack seal, seal coat and striping as specified in the RFP proposed by Everest Paving in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred dollars for the town hall and public works of uh public partner.
There's a motion, a second, any further discussion?
It's not even better.
Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Letter K, this is the BMC Engineering Service for Telecom Relocation at the White Oak Water Tower. Deputy Town Manager De Tomaso, anything to add to this?
Yeah, this is for um, BMC is our, is the town's um engineering contractor for all things telecom. And uh looking ahead to two thousand twenty-four, we will be reconditioning the water tower on White Oak Avenue, the corner of White Oak and Fisher. There are two um telecom carriers on that tank, and as part of our lease agreement with them, we have to give them at least six months' notice to get their equipment off the tank so that we can do our, our required maintenance. Um so we're, we're getting a jumpstart on this. Because there are two of them, I want to give a little bit extra time, so as soon as we authorize this agreement, BMC will start working with them. We have to erect a temporary tower um to put their equipment on, and um this is a pass-through contract, so the, the conditions of our lease say that we are allowed to recoup the costs resulting from the relocation of telecom equipment in order to do maintenance on the tank, so um it's sixty-five hundred dollars per carrier, but we will collect that from them in an escrow account and use that to pay BMC's invoices related to this work. And um we are starting, just as an aside, not related to this kind of, um the work on Ridge Road is beginning this week um on the Ridge Road Tower. The tank has been drained, and um, were they out there today?
Where, where's that?
The um.
Oh, Ridge Road, yeah.
Yeah. So they'll be um welding arms onto the top of the tank that will support the uh tent that's going to go around the tank. that's gonna go around the tank so that, at, when they sandblast, um, that they can collect all of that material, and then, um, so you'll see that going up and down as they start working.
Anything idea what the angle will be for that tank?
You wanna try that? Pull, pull a cord, a golden cord?
There's several students in the audience, they may be, uh, inspired by what the line on this tank just across this, the tent comes down.
Yes.
Isn't about a month?
It'll be two months.
Two months.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. There's a recommendation in front of the council?
I move that we authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement with the BMC LLC to provide engineering services for the telecom telecom coordination associated with the White Oak Water Tower reconditioning project in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars per tenant.
Second. Motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner?
Yes. Last on the agenda is letter L. This is the Fire Department request for two thousand twenty-three four E four fifty with a specialized utility box. Fire Chief Mike Mark Hayduk is in the audience. Anything to add?
No, we had bonded for this a couple of years ago, but supply and logistics didn't allow us to do this until now. So it's a little bit more than what we anticipated, but we do have the money and the geobots.
Very good. Thank you.
Please. Well, Mr. President, I, I move to approve the purchase from Fire Service, Inc. for a new two thousand twenty-three E, sorry, Ford, Ford E, or which we that they specialize in, we bought for one hundred eighty-five thousand.
Second. There's a motion, a second, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to announce, or at least notify the, the many people who are attending their first council meeting. We just spent quite a bit of money, um, and we didn't discuss things a lot. But you'll find the discussion, the memos, and the reason for it, and where that money's coming from, and all of those things on the web on the agenda. You go to the web page for the town of Munster and choose today's meeting and get the uh, agenda. It'll also have all these memos explaining where the money comes from, how it's gonna be paid, and, and why we need things, things of that sort. And so those, that work is all done before the meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other reports from the council?
Uh, Mr. President, yes. Counselor Schoen, I serve on the Lake County Solid Waste Management District Board. I will meet six times a year, and it's probably been one of the most exciting things to happen in our service. Um, they had to move facilities from Martin Hammond because Hammond needed their fire station back. And they've moved in a couple of years back to the former Girl Scouts building on Broadway in Maryville. And one of the main things that they do is offer educational services for students, like my daughter's in fourth grade. I'm trying to get Elliot School to come and take a tour. Um, and so they contracted with a design firm that also did the Pharaoh's design. If you've been on a Pharaoh's farm, and it looks really, really cool. It's finally been almost completed. It was almost completed about six months ago.
And this is the second time it's been almost completed.
And there was a pipe burst, uh, and flooded, flooded the whole area last, last, uh, December. It cost about a hundred thousand dollars.
So. Before a single student seen it. It was ruined.
So it actually looks pretty cool. You might not think too much about garbage, um, but we hope that students and schools in the area get to, uh, schedule to work on. It's been about three years since any of those have taken place.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any other further reports or portfolio reports from the council? I would like to make the following announcement. Our next regular town council meeting is on Monday, September fourth, which is Labor Day. That meeting has been moved to Thursday, September seventh. And then we also have our next town council meeting in September, or second meeting of the month will be on Monday, September twentieth. Seeing no other action, we will, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved, second.
Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And at that time, I'd like to quickly move into our redevelopment commission meeting. I see Mr. John Castro from the school board is here. Thank you, John.
There we go. This meeting will likely be done in about a minute.
At this, at this time, I'd like to call the regular, uh, redevelopment commission, regular meeting on August twenty-first to order. Roll call please.
Commissioner Schoen?
Resort.
Commissioner Mellon? Commissioner Tulowitzki?
President.
Commissioner Coulterites? Commissioner Gardner?
President.
We'd like to acknowledge that our school board liaison, Mr. John Castro, is with us today. Thanks, John. Thanks for seeing me.
Thanks for seeing you all. Thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to the redevelopment commission in the public? Dean Nolan, we will move into the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second. There's a motion, a second, or a roll call please?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor, uh, or Commissioner Schoen?
Even so.
Even so, yes. And Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
I see no old business, nor is there any new business. There's no reports, no announcements. Uh, adjournment, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. So move. Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. And at this time, uh, that completes tonight's meetings in this room. There is a Munster Civic Foundation meeting that will be held next door.